Good evening, everybody. We're just about a minute away from getting this city council meeting started. I'd like to mention for your benefit that this weekend is the Harvest Moon Festival, which is sponsored by the Historic Granbury Merchants Association. It's going to take place this Saturday and Sunday on the square. I'd also would like to announce that once again, the city's finance department has walked away with the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting as presented by the Government Finance Officers Association of the U.S. and Canada for its CAFER. That's the Comprehensive Annual Finance Report. The certificate is awarded to Becky Price, who's the Assistant Director of Finance, and City Manager Wayne McKeethan, who also wears the head of Finance. Congratulations, you guys. I would like to mention that the only downside to getting another certificate is they may have to build a bigger wall in the finance department to put another plaque up. With that being said, I am now going to open this city council meeting agenda, call it to order. This is October the 18th, 2011. It's coming up on 6:00. We're here in the City Hall. Councilman Tyra, can you lead us in an invocation? And we'll follow that with a pledge to the flags. So if you would, please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much that we can come together and do the city's business with the support of our people here, Lord, people that support government and show up. We appreciate that, Lord. We thank you so much, Lord, for our troops and for our police officers or firemen, for the people that are serving the public out there in this country and not in this country. Lord, we just commit all things in your hands. We ask for mercy and grace for each of us as we make these decisions, Lord, that affect many people, the city, and our future. So, Lord, we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
And now the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag, please.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. This will bring us to our consent agenda. First up for consent is the minutes of the September 20th. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes. Anybody?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen, a second. Any amendments that you find that need to be mentioned about the September 20th minutes? And I will point out that I found one area under 11-171. Very last sentence in the section 11-171, strike the words "for thee." Currently reads, "For the city to be ready for thee when the time came." Strike the words "for thee" in that last sentence. Does everybody see that? The other correction has to do with 11-172. Underneath the bottom of the page, it talks about Council Allen made a motion that the date of the City of Granbury general election be moved to November so there would be no additional cost to taxpayers. And it says Mayor Pratt did not ask for a second. I would like that to be stricken, the words "Mayor Pratt did not ask for a second," and replace it with the words "dies for a lack of a second." It, just a reminder, the mayor doesn't always have to ask. It's more of a courtesy that I ask for a second. Entertain a motion to accept the amendments.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now we'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended. All in favor of accepting the minutes of September 20th as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moves us to the second consent item, which is the minutes of October the 4th. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes of October the 4th.
Did you find anything there, Mayor?
I did find one item.
Just to make it easy, to make one motion, if you'll bring it out.
I would like to point your direction to Part 11-179. Following the section where it says "second motion," Councilperson Tyra moved that council move this item and that council actually vote on this item at the first scheduled meeting in November. It does not list the second. My notes indicated that Tony Allen was the second on this motion, and I would like that added to the minutes of October 4th.
So moved.
All in favor of accepting the minutes as...I'm sorry, I need a second, please. I need...thank you very much. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Now we'll accept the minutes as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving down to the first deliberation item. Item number one, consider and approve a potable water contract with Monarch Utilities Incorporated for the following subdivisions: Western Hills, Granbury Acres, Comanche Cove, and Hideaway Bay. The City of Granbury is renewing the potable water contract with Monarch Utilities for a term of five years. The following subdivisions will be within the contract: Western Hills, Granbury Acres, Comanche Cove, and Hideaway Bay. This is a potable water contract. It is basically there to allow them an agreement with the city in case they need additional waters to supplement their drought conditions, I guess. Can you elaborate on that for us, Alva?
Yes, sir. Basically, it's, obviously, it's going to be for peak demands or even in regular demands where something happens to one of their water wells or several of their water wells, drought conditions, things like that. And again, this is renewal. We normally renew every five years. This one is a little bit longer that we took to renew this thing, but basically, we go in five-year terms. And basically, what we've done is to help us and them as well to put out limits so that everybody kind of knows, you know, what they need to take, which will help them with the TCQ with their .6 rule, also to allow us not to have big wat...or amounts of water drawn on us. So that's what this water contract is for.
And originally, the original contract that we had did not really specify the quantity, so there's a change in the quantity language and also a change in the terms language?
Yes, sir.
Is that what we have before us?
That is correct. Yes, before, there were no quantities whatsoever. Now, we have the quantities, and also what we've looked at is some minimal bills and things like that, which we did not have in the current contract.
So in your opinion, is this the best way to go with this?
Yes, sir. This is the best way.
It protects the city's interests?
For the city, as well as even Eco-Ressources or Monarch.
Any other questions for staff from the council?
Have they ever had to...
They have actually four meters right now, so they actually have four different subdivisions. They actually pull from us right now.
What this does, though, it protects...it helps the utility system and the utility payers in that if they go over the maximum pull, we go to $20 per thousand. The local residents pay six.
Correct.
So they will be paying for much of the capacity and other costs that we need them to cover when they pull that water.
Any other questions for staff from council? Entertain a motion to accept the contract with Monarch Utilities.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second by Mr. Perkel. Any further discussion on this motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moves us down to item number two, consider and approve the purchase of 23 connections at a total cost of $24,150 from Monarch Utilities that are located in the city limits in or around Plaza Drive in Kings Plaza, contingent upon TCEQ approval. And I do want to specify that this is contingent upon TCEQ. Council, you will notice that you have a little agreement that's been placed on your table. It says agreement between the City of Granbury and Monarch Utilities. That is relating to this. This is what has to be submitted to TCEQ for their approval before we can move forward with the purchase of these 23 connections. And just to follow up, Monarch is willing to sell. This is not a takeover bid in any manner. This cleans up what's called our CCN. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay.
I have some questions for staff, Mayor.
Fire it off.
And this may be directed more toward Wayne than it is toward Alva, but we're looking at these two contracts. This one right here, what is our return on our investment?
It's got about a 20, 30 months.
About 20, 30 months, yes, sir.
And so this is kind of going back to what you said at the last issue, last motion, is this is building our utility fund up. We're getting more customers, and we're doing that not by, as the mayor said, by reaching out and grabbing them against their will. They're coming to us.
Also, they had approached us to join with them in a legal suit, okay? And it was going to cost us darn near as much money in terms of the legal suit.
Yes, sir.
To help them get a pay rate increase. And there are other things they were involved in.
Actually, there was other cities that were...
The suit was against...oh, the protect...I'm sorry.
Yeah, there was other cities that were going against Monarch.
Rather than to spend the money to even go into that lawsuit, why not just buy the connections and be out?
And just for follow-up on this, the majority of these connections, these 23 connections, are business and commercial. They are not residential. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe actually all of them are commercial. I don't think there's any residential, to my knowledge, as there's John. Okay. Okay. But the ones here that we're discussing are all commercial.
Thank you.
The point is, we can get more customers like this.
Yes, sir.
It's a win-win for all of us, and especially our customers.
Yes, sir. And this little subdivision, or this little area for y'all that, and probably most people don't have a clue that it's not being served by the city, is actually in between South Town and Plaza Drive, all the way to Kowalski Shop, all that area right in there, the storage place. This is not city water right now.
Thank you.
Alva, is the rate going to be the same as their regular customers?
The ones that are in the city will be 667 per thousand, and then the minimum will be like $16. So yes, it would be the exact same as the rest of them.
Is that what they're paying now?
No, sir, they're not. They have a base minimum from Monarch, and then I couldn't tell you what their per thousand is, but...
Well, their minimum's much higher.
Their minimum is higher than ours, yes. Because our minimum is $16, and again, then after that, it's 667 for the ones that are within the city limits.
And once again...
Fair statement that they're going to get...buy water cheaper from the city than what they were buying it from with their previous owner.
And plus, it helps out with the city. It does address the CCN. It clears up that...I believe you have a slide to show...
Yes, we do have. And this way, just for everybody, so everybody can see it. There's a couple of them, so you kind of see the areas where it's at. And again, you know, most of y'all that are familiar with it, you'll know right where it's at, because probably you pass by it every day and probably don't think lots about it.
Right there behind William's, see it?
Yes, sir. Correct.
But anyway, it cleans up the CCN along that area. We've got a zigzag kind of a thing, a jigsaw going on back there.
You can kind of see it, and it's kind of...and on the CCN, the Texas CCN map, if you look at it, it has this, you know, City of Granbury comes all the way, wraps around, except for that one block right there.
It's right across the street from 377 from Kroger.
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
Yes. And it's been that way for forever since I...
And just to follow this up, TCEQ approval on this agreement is going to be anywhere from four to six months to get that approval.
Yes, sir.
At which time it will be into next year, next calendar year.
Don't see any reason for TCEQ to stop this in any way.
No, sir. Basically, what happens after this is I turn in what's called a transfers of merger...and mergers application for CCN amendment, and basically, I'll submit that to them as soon as we get, you know, once I get it done, probably within about a week or so. And then it just goes through the process is what happens after that. And then you have to mail notifications out to all the customers and anybody within the area. And so, no, I don't foresee it.
Any other questions for staff? This time, I'll entertain a motion to move forward with the...to approve the purchase of 23 connections from Monarch Utilities.
So moved.
Contingent...I'm sorry, contingent upon TCEQ approval. Thank you very much. We have a motion by Mr. Perkel. Need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us to item number three, purchase of Laguna Trace Water System. Consider and approve the purchase of 82 connections at a total cost of $102,500 from Laguna Trace Incorporated, also known in the area of South Harbor, that are located in the City ETJ in and around Highway 144 south of Misty Meadows, contingent upon TCEQ approval. Council, just for note, this is approximately a 28-month payout. Once again, requires a four to six-month approval period to get through TCEQ. It's possible to utilize bond funds for the purchase of this system, however, because it includes infrastructure, including a 30,000-gallon storage tank, a pressure tank, piping, along with four wells. It also includes the meters that are currently attached to the piping for each one of the residents. We're basically buying a system, and that's why there's a price difference between this and the other system that we saw before. Once again, we...does anyone from council need to ask staff about this particular item?
Does this help loop our system out there?
Yes, sir. This is actually a very strategic force. Actually, it'll allow us to loop all the way from Misty Meadows into Spanish Trails, which currently we do not have the ability to do, and this will allow us...
We have ours actually changing that a little bit.
Yes, sir. It is. That way, you have feeds coming from two different directions, so yes.
Any other questions?
No, just a statement that we're...here we are, we're going to be doing some wells in the near future, and we got the price from your initial act, and we're getting bored with all this construction for $100,000.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I move that we approve it.
Hang on. We'll go ahead and hear the motion, the motion.
I move that we approve the purchase of 82 connections from Laguna Trace Incorporated, South Harbor, contingent upon the TCEQ approval.
And I heard a second, a second from Mr. Perkel. Any further discussion?
One question, Mayor. Thank you. Alva, is...are these wells up and running, these four wells, and are they approved for drinking water?
I believe three of them are actually up and running. The one, I'm not 100% sure if they ever got approval for that fourth one yet. I know they were working on it back in August, but if not, we can make sure we get that one up and then, you know, make sure all of them are up and running.
You don't see any problem at all with the wells?
No, sir.
Great.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of 82 connections from Laguna Trace Incorporated, contingent upon TCEQ approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Bringing up item number four, consider and approve an agreement for project management services related to the Opera House renovation project. City council recently asked the city manager to negotiate a contract for the design and build program manager as part of the completion of the project to improve the Opera House. City manager has negotiated with two qualified architects and is recommending the hiring of Terry Cone, a local architect, as program manager. Copies of the proposals from the architect, Terry Cone, along with Freezen Nichols are included in your council agenda packet for council review and consideration. Would like to point out that the Terry Cone proposal is for $32,000, while the Freezen Nichols proposal came in at a whopping $141,000. Staff recommends that the council accept the Terry Cone proposal. Mr. Cone is present. If anybody on council would like to speak to Mr. Cone regarding his proposal or have questions? Council, anybody have questions for him?
I want to thank you for your bid. I want to thank staff for doing our due diligence and getting out there and finding somebody local and taking care of us. Appreciate that very much.
Yeah, we have a lot of confidence in Terry Cone, and it's a local architect. Maybe the question is the difference between the two bids. With a lar...and you might answer that, but it's my understanding with a large firm, there's a lot of review process. You know, Freezen Nichols is usually...has much larger projects. This is a $1.2 million bid, our project, and you might address that as well, Terry. You have looked at what we need to do, and you're consistent with what Freezen Nichols was going to do as well, right?
Yes. I think overkill is the best word I can come up with to describe what they've done. It's a large firm, a lot of overhead, and honestly, I think a marketing person took a canned proposal from some other job. That's 11% of the proposed construction cost, that $141,000, just for oversight of the project. I mean, most architectural engineering projects, normal building projects, 7% is a nice fee, 8 to 10 if you've got a lot of extras going into it. And that includes all the architectural engineering design, so I'm not sure what they were thinking, but it doesn't make sense to me. The way I will approach this project, based on the wording in my proposal, is analogous to a retainer, like an attorney would do. I'm available. We'll...of course, the major issues will be, to start with, the RFQ for the design build entity. As that process moves forward, programming of the project is very important. Programming is one of those architectural terms. It's basically, we learn what the...you, the client, wants and needs in your project, and we convey that to the designer, who in this case will be a design build entity. It's an important part of the process, because without that, the architect is just searching around and trying to read minds. So that's very important, and we'll be very involved with that process. When we get to the actual construction part, there's a couple of very important functions that need to take place. And one of those, probably the most important, is oversight of the monies expended. We review...we'll review the monthly applications for payment for the contractor and approve those based on detailed site visits to make sure that what they're asking for to be paid for has in fact been done. It's...that's extreme...as you can tell, it's an extremely important function. The other thing that's very important in that construction phase is what's commonly known as the industry is, is submittals. And we want to see some kind of detailed technical information about literally everything that goes into the project, from the screws and the hardware to the concrete, just everything that goes in the project, to make sure that you're getting what you're paid for. And it's a very common process. It's used in the industry. All the good contractors are used to it, and architects do that routinely. But we look at those things, and if contractors are proposing to use something that does not meet plans and specs, then we make sure that that doesn't get into the job. So those are some just highlights, very important functions that we do. Freezen Nichols proposal, there was a lot of stuff there, honestly, and, yeah, I don't know that we're necessarily going to provide you every single thing that they listed on there. I'm not sure that you'd want everything, but you'd probably have a pile of paper and you would know what to do with it. So I'm taking a little different approach, a more practical, hands-on approach. My office is three blocks down the street here. I literally walk to the project, so I'm available at any time.
Mayor, I have some other questions that came up as Mr. Cone was speaking. Mr. Cone, the...as you talk about this in the process, especially the early part of the process, as you know, there's been a lot of work done already. Do you see value in that work in moving us forward quicker?
I think so, but I would like to have some more extensive conversations with the folks that are generating the ideas so we...so I can...because honestly, I didn't have the benefit of that information part now.
Yes, yes.
And I'm not sure that the proposals that I saw, that those folks had much of that information either. I think maybe they may have been thinking that, you know, that's what the city needs, the Opera House project needs, but not necessarily direct input from the users or the owners.
Any other questions for Mr. Cone? This time, I'd entertain a motion to accept an agreement with Mr. Terry Cone to serve as the representative for the duration of the project for the Opera House renovation, to act as the city's representative for the duration of the project of the Opera House renovation.
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Tyra, second by Mr. Perkel. Any further discussion regarding this? The term is for $32,000, I believe? 32,000 billed monthly for the length of the project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. This time, we're moving to item number five, consider appointments to the Granbury Historic Preservation Commission. Currently, there's two vacancies, and I would like to point out to council that one of the vacancies must be an owner of property in the historic district or a landmark building. However, the other may just be merely a resident of the city or a property owner within the Also, I would like to mention that before your dais, we received a last-minute application from Ms. Shirley Hooks. She was out of town and unable to file her application until Monday, so you have that for consideration. I would like to point out that in our packet, we had also a couple of individuals who currently serve on other boards within the city. I would like to request that council not overburden the individuals that currently serve on other boards with being on another board. I'd like to think that we're diversifying the applicants and spreading the goodwill throughout the city. Those, by the way, those two applicants that we had also interested in the board are Andy Rash and Sherri Reynolds. Both of them currently serve on boards. Andy Rash currently serves on our airport board. Sherri Reynolds is currently an alternate on the ZBA board. That's the zoning board of adjustment.
Mayor, let me ask you a question, because I got that packet.
Sure.
Just to make sure we're on the same page. And I do...I feel like that I hope that we follow your lead. If somebody's serving on a board and we have other people not, you know, let's try to spread it around. So doing that, am I correct, when I read that we have four vacancies or three vacancies tonight?
No, there are only two vacancies on this particular board.
Three requests.
Granbury...I'm sorry?
C-1231. Two of them, there's two vacancies, but there's two requests for 1231. Why couldn't we do that tonight and get it done? Did you get that in your packet?
Those are the two. Those are the two vacancies we're entertaining right now.
Well, no, let me explain this. There's four people that come due on December 31st of 2011.
First, just so you know where we're going first with this appointment, is filling the vacancies.
So we're not...
We have two vacancies.
Okay.
That's...and I'd like to go there first, to fill the vacancies first. Then we have some members that are...want to be reappointed. They have requested a reappointment, if you'll notice in that last column.
Okay.
Three individuals that are also up on 1231 of 2011, in addition to the two vacancies. Do you see where I'm talking about?
So we are going to...there's going to be two motions?
First, I want...first, I would like to fill the vacancies.
Okay.
And then consider the reappointments or replacing those individuals.
Okay, got it.
Their terms do not expire, by the way, until 1231. Even these vacancies, if you'll notice the term on one of the vacancies, their term is up on 2011, 1231, 2011, and the other one is on 2012. So we're filling two vacancies, and we need to designate who is filling what vacancy, just so you follow me.
Yes. And will those vacancies, am I correct, they will expire on 1231?
1231 of 2012 for one, and 1231 of 2011 for the other.
Okay. I got you.
Okay?
And it was in just...
And we do not have to consider all of these reappointments until the month of December, just so you understand.
So that...
We can fill the...
That was my point. Since we're here and it's before us, we have the names, and just for the sake where the audience understands what we're dealing with here, is as these appointments came in, they emailed them to the council. So we got some this day and some next day, and we want to make sure everybody's considered. So that's why I'm taking a little bit more time here, Mayor. So you're telling me that it's not your intention to fill the reappointments tonight that come due on the 31st?
Not unless the council wants to do that. If the council so chooses to extend those and address those, we can do that. What we have before us is dealing with... What we have before us is dealing with the, consider the appointments to the Granbury Historic Preservation Commission. That means all of them. That's fully encompassing, but what I would like to handle first is filling the vacancies. So, as you can see, we have four individuals interested in filling the vacancy, but we need to be sure that we assign who is going to fill the vacancy that comes due in 1231 of 2011, and the person that will be due in 2012.
Got you.
Thank you. Okay, so entertain any kind of a motion to nominate anybody that you see out of those four individuals. Remember, Shirley Hooks is also to be considered in this. Stan Wasileski, I hope I pronounced that right, Brad Coker, and Sarah Baker.
Mayor, I nominate Stan and Sarah Baker. I can't pronounce that.
Let's deal with one at a time. We'll fill the vacancy that comes due 1211, 2011 first.
Right, Stan.
We have Stan Wasileski. Any other nominations? Okay, we'll close the nominations. All in favor of allowing Stan to serve the, finish out of the 2011 vacancy? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. So, Stan is now our 2011 candidate. Now, let's look at who we want to serve on the 2012. It wasn't, it wasn't a, yeah, yes, yeah. And we'll do the same thing with the second seat. For 2012, we have a vacancy. Out of those, you have Brad Coker, Sarah Baker, and Shirley Hooks.
I think Tony's already said Sarah for that position, so I think we should see if there's any other nominations, because we have Sarah on the table.
Okay, so Sarah Baker is nominated to fill the 2012 seat. Any other nominations? All in favor of Sarah Baker, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Sarah Baker, welcome to the team to serve through the 2012 period. Now then, as per your request, Councilman Tyra, you stated that you might want to consider extending the term for those that are up in 1231, 2011 at this time. We can do that. I would like to remind you that they still have a couple of months left to serve. So, if you want to do that, we'll entertain a motion to do so. We can either fill those seats with new people and let them complete their term till 1231 of 2011, or however you want to do it.
Well, let me make a suggestion to my peers here. As you look at this, these requested reappointments, they're due on the 31st. So, if we vote on those one, two, three requested reappointments tonight, then you're saying for sure these folks need to finish out their term.
Definitely.
They definitely need to finish out their term.
They would finish out their term till 20, in 1231 of 2011, and the new person, if so desired, that you wind up putting in their place, in their stead, they would take up action on that board on 1/1 of 2012.
I got you now. And so, with that said, the only thing this council would have to deal with again on this commission would be Stan's position when it come up 31st.
You could actually do him as well at this time, because his term ends 1231 of 2011. You could do him as well.
Yeah.
The only one you can't do is 1231 of 2012, which you've now assigned to Sarah Baker.
That makes sense, Mayor, and I appreciate you clarifying that completely. It's kind of one of those deals where, you know, if we get it out of the way tonight, it lessens the agenda for the next time around. So, am I correct, if we follow your, if we follow your recommendation, we would take Andy Rash and Sherri Reynolds off the table?
I would, I would recommend that.
Okay, no, okay, and so recommending that, that would leave us Brad Coker, Shirley Hooks. Is that correct?
That's right. They're, those two individuals have shown interest in serving on this board, and they do qualify. Do I hear any motions to do anything?
There's four or five names appearing, so this is a very sensitive issue, because when you start, you have people who want to be on the board, and you have people who've been on the board for a long time, want to be reappointed, it's not an easy thing to decide. So, I mean, there is some sensitivity to this, and that we appreciate people's service.
To that point, I'd like to suggest maybe we can look at this at another date.
I would suggest that.
Is that a motion you'd like to postpone to?
Motion that we?
A motion to postpone?
Postpone.
Okay, a motion to postpone to any particular date? I would suggest that, since their terms are up in December, that it be taken into consideration the first?
First meeting in December.
Meeting in December. So, if that's a motion to postpone till the first meeting in December, need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Mr. Allen. All in favor of postponing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We'll take this up at a later date.
This will give our two members not here a chance to also consider.
Sounds good. All right, that moves us on down the line. We are moving down the line. Bringing us to item number six, consider and approve an ordinance providing for the adoption of revised regulations for taxicabs and other vehicles for hire. Counsel, I'd like to remind you that on September the 6th, we saw this very same document. I've already spoke with the attorney regarding the fact that this is the same document as we saw last month, and which time the council had requested a simplified version be brought back before us. And I haven't seen a simplified version, it's still 46 pages long, so.
Because that's not what the council asked, if you review them in September.
Mayor, may I speak to that?
Hang on just a second. I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go there. I would, I would like to, I would like to see that this item be postponed to a later date.
So moved.
But I would like to see that it get consolidated in certain sections. I would like to talk in specific regarding the scope of sections, which for the attorney's perspective, they are parts .30 and through .33. I think they could be consolidated in such a manner that we can lessen the number of pages and stipulate it a little better. Also, I noticed in, because I did take time to read all 46 pages, and I also found that the CVB director has quite a bit of power in the fact that he has the right to suspend a grant of privilege for a taxicab service under this, as outlined in Part 008 of this. And I would ask councilor to double-check to make sure that's where council would like to see the CVB director.
Mayor.
But, other than that, I think we need to have this taken back out, and maybe this would buy some time. I don't think this needs to be taken up immediately. I think we've got a little bit of time before we need to worry about taxicabs in our town.
Mayor, I have a motion, and would like to make a statement to follow up on some things you did before I make the motion, that I think there was some miscommunication between the city staff and council, because you're right, I think the council was clear they wanted to see a friendlier version, a version, and Mr. Parsons even brought it up, about one that's not so overwhelming or regulatory. And I'm in full support of that, but I don't think, and I don't think, I know for a fact that we did not have the time to get with the city attorney to work that piece of legislation that we know as ordinance. So, with that said, I would like to move that we put this off to a later date to be determined. Period.
Second.
I heard your motion, I heard the second from Councilman Allen. I would like to entertain a motion to postpone to a later date contingent upon the staff providing us with new documentation.
I have full confidence in our staff that after this miscommunication, they will come back to the council and will give us several options with changes. So, I don't want to tie their hands in that respect, so I'm going to stand by my motion. If Mr. Allen will stand by a second.
But your motion doesn't specify a date or a time or anything.
Right, at a later date to be determined, it will be brought back before the council. That'll give everybody plenty of time to work together to get this done.
It's out of order. You need to post, if you postpone it, you're going to postpone it to the very next meeting. If you postpone it to a later?
Let me just table it. If you ask the city attorney, can I just table it, city attorney, to a later date?
Point of order, to table it means that you're going to remove it off of today's agenda and put it back on to today's agenda. That's not the same thing. Postpone is the better language to say. I just need you to provide me with a date, Councilman.
Let me redo the motion. I want to table it until February 2012.
You can't table it, you can postpone it till?
Okay, postpone.
Postpone, okay.
Let's just, don't do it right now, let's give our staff and council enough time to work together on this.
We're going to start doing this right. Postpone till the second meeting in February, is that what I heard you say?
February 2012, that's correct.
I'll give you a date there.
So, we have a motion to postpone. That means you withdrew the previous motion, sir?
That's correct.
We have a motion to postpone till the second meeting in February 2012. Need a second.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Allen. Any further discussion regarding the postponement? All in favor of postponing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We'll take this up in the second meeting in February of 2012. February 23rd was what I heard? 21st, February 21st. 2012. Bringing us down to item number seven, discuss and consider adding a contract consultant position in the tourism department to be the Opera House liaison during the upcoming construction period in order to continue promotion, design, advisory, and management of the Opera House operations. Council members, we have in your packet, you had a seven-month contract proposal that was presented by Andrew Barris. He has yet to determine what the name of his theater company is going to be, but in his seven-month proposal, he outlines that he is going to serve as a representative of the city and its interests related to the upcoming renovation. Andrew will coordinate and consult with the Granbury city entity and the incoming architect, construction personnel. He also states that as an operational consultant, he needs to have time to form a 501(c)(3) for his nonprofit organization, which he has yet to form. This will give him time to establish that, as well as build up some community support out there. The production company also will need some time to secure production rights to performance material and to submit their proposals to the holders of the rights for those properties. In other words, when you go out and you get licensing to produce a program, you need to be able to tell them about the royalty aspect of the production. They need to know how many chairs, how many seats, how many production runs you're going to have. He outlines that he would be needing some additional time. He can't just jump in, in other words, in June or July, once the season starts, and have a list of programs to perform, without having some time to build up that period of promotion. He also states in his seven-month proposal that he will produce two production shows. He states he would like to put on one musical and one straight play and produce these performances in our convention center. I'm just highlighting things that I ran across in the seven-month contract. As I mentioned, Opera House promotion, he wants to have time to prepare for a ribbon-cutting and red carpet ceremony for the opening night, establish an online presence through social media, establish a website for the upcoming production company, and work with local restaurants, boutiques, hotels, to build inroads for, building up package deals, along with tickets, overnight stays, that kind of stuff. Work with local television, provide tours to potential donors of the progress of the renovation. His term of the agreement is going to be from 12/1 of 2011 through to the date of June 30th of 2012. It would be an individual contract, I guess, contract labor contract, is that what I'm understanding we've got before us? Contract labor style agreement, payment of $3,600 for the period for six months, with those payments hitting at the first of each month. He would also like to request use of the dormitory, so that he has a place to reside in as his living quarters, and he requests that those be at no charge for rent or utilities from the time period that coincides with the contract from 12/1 to 6/30. In addition, he highlights that he would like to consider a one-year contract in order to receive the necessary licensing fees. He feels it's pertinent that he must have a contract that takes him from 6/1 of 2011 to 6/1 of 2012. I would like to point out that I'm a little opposed to a one-year contract, because if you give them the timeframe from 6/1 to 6/1 of 2012, and I believe the contract time would actually be 6/1 2012 to 6/1 2013, by the way. Just to point out in errand the dates, that if we were to make that a one-year contract that takes it all the way around to June 1 of 2013, that we might be hampered if we find that the working relationship between Andrew Barris and the city is not working out, and you would need time, six months at least, minimum, to establish a new production company. So, I'm hesitant to see us attach a one-year contract as part of this agreement with Mr. Barris. That being said, counsel, what we have before us is we have a seven-month agreement proposal from Andrew Barris to operate as an Opera House liaison.
Mayor, I'd like to address some of the issues you brought up and make some statements concerning the agreement. For my peers, it may not have had an opportunity to look at the details and see the vision that?
Well, I think we all had it in our packet, though. Bring them up.
Thank you. When we, when we talk about putting on a show, and we know that we're fixing to have our current producer that's been here since, what, 2006, going to be leaving December 31st, this looks like an awesome opportunity to have somebody come in a month before that. The place will never go dark. The phone will be answered. We do not want for anyone to think about the Opera House being closed. We want to give the perception that we're still here, we're building, we're building, and we're building, and we're going to keep moving forward. In fact, when I read the proposal, I saw all the hurdles and hoops that you have to jump through to get this production in order, and there is no way we could even think about doing this at a later date, because they wouldn't have enough time to start producing a summer show. So, I think it is something that we need. We're blessed to have a gentleman of this character, of this type of background. For you all those that don't know, he comes from a family that has a history in theater and currently produces theater in a local venue and does a great job of it. He's got a model, he's got a brand, and they're willing to do that, he's willing to do that in Granbury. What I'm excited about is that we will be able to move this forward, start selling tickets, promotion, promotion, promotion. And guess what? We have invested in our budget over $400,000 to tourism. This would be a good way to spend a very small stop into that. So, with that said, and one more thing, this year situation, I thought the gentleman made a very sound decision to put that in there, because if I was coming forward to invest seven months of my future in Granbury, live here, wanting to live here, promote this thing, all of our community, build up the positive impact it'll have, I would want something more than seven months, because he's investing his money to build his production company, to run the opera, and operate Opera House. So, I'm very much in approval of this year contract.
Councilman Tyra?
And so, with that?
Councillor Tyra?
Yes.
Can I ask if Mr. Barris is present? Because I believe he is.
Fantastic.
Mr. Barris, if I could get you to come up here, state your name, your address, and maybe council has some questions for you regarding this.
Hello, my name is Andrew Barris, I reside at 1710 Bell Plain Drive in Creeburn, Texas 76033.
Now, Mr. Barris, you visited with me once before, you showed me some, a business plan that just floored me, I have to tell you, it was very well-rounded, it covered a lot of the scope of business that is involved in production, so I applaud you on that. I noticed it's not part of this contract, though, but I'm sure you're bringing it with you as part of this, is that correct?
Yeah.
You haven't abandoned that business plan?
Oh, no, no, it's the same model, as Mr. Tyra mentioned, it's the brand that's being created, it's the same model. I basically made an addendum to that, to get the seven-month contract put together, and the year contract as well. But, it's exactly the same brand, it's the same model, the 10-year flow analysis that's in that packet, is the same exact process that I'll be going through.
One question I have is, as I mentioned, the date, it says from June of 2011 to June of 2012, I think that was a typo, is that correct?
That's the mistake, yeah.
Okay. And am I right in saying, though, that if it were a six-month agreement to get you from June to December 31st, say it didn't work out, if we took your contract and rode it all the way around to June of the following summer, it would be very hard-pressed to replace you, is that not true?
Well, I think it's, you know, theater is a business that certainly, and especially as it sits right now, is something that has to grow, right? It has to, you have to plant seeds, and you have to set that thing up and cultivate it and let it grow. And I think if we set that process up on a six-month contract, then we're not giving it the appropriate time to let that thing grow. You know, I have confidence that it's going to do that, obviously, I'm, you know, changing the direction of my life to make that happen, but I think that it'd be fair for all of us to make sure that we allow that process to happen, without saying six months is our period of time, even, in my opinion, I think a year is quite short. I would prefer it to be a little bit longer to make that happen, because as you see in the packet that I've sent out, it's a process, you know, I've laid out exactly what it's going to look like, based on, you know, other theaters that I've worked at, and some different numbers that I predict are going to happen here. And you see in the first year, the margins are a little bit tighter, and naturally, as we start to grow, we'll need to get the margins much wider, and that happens in the second, slash, third, fourth, and fifth years, as it goes down the line. So I think the working relationship will be great, I think that we'll start to see success right off the bat, but I think that six months would definitely be too short to see that process grow properly.
Now, in the first six months, or in the seven-month contract that you're presenting, you're requesting $3,600 a month, what are you requesting after that? Are you expecting...
From the city?
Yes, sir.
Uh...
As part of this one-year contract, is your anticipation to get utilities, rent? What is the production?
The packet mentions that it's $2,500 monthly for a fee of rent and utilities.
But as far as your compensation, is what I'm referring to?
From my compensation, it has nothing specifically to do with the city, it's a, you know, it's a nonprofit organization, and I'd be a member of the board of directors.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Barris? Yes, sir, Mr. Allen?
Mayor, I've got a couple. One thing is, the last day of the show here is end of December, is that correct?
The current resident company, their last day of occupation of the theater is 12/31.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that that's the date of their last show, I don't know what that might be.
Only reason I was asking that, because this begins a month before they get out. So I was just curious to what was going to go on for that 30-day period, when we already got somebody there, was one thing.
Well, I think it's a great opportunity, right? I think that there's a lot of infrastructure that's happening with the current tenant at this point, that for me, it'll be really important to be able to liaise with him, and, you know, establish, there's a lot of networking, coming from the outside, obviously, there are some things that I need to learn, relative to, could be anything, right, relative to the acting community, or how they've gone about their promotion, or advertising, or et cetera, et cetera. There are a lot of things that I think it'll be invaluable for me to discuss with him over that month's period of time, if he's willing to do it.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask you a question?
Yes, I need you to speak into that thing, so, yeah, there you go.
I just need, I think the council should get some clarification on whether or not this is a contract to hire this gentleman, or whether or not it's a contract to hire some corporation that doesn't exist.
Well, and obviously, he'll have the final word on that, but from my reading of it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, is that it's very clear that at this point in time, we enter into a seven-month agreement for a contract with this gentleman, during that seven months' time, he is in fact, giving us all the details of how he will promote this, do this, do that, working for the city, but at the same time, building this nonprofit, putting his own money in this, and that's why he's asking for that year. So yes, in fact, seven months, knowing that we're also giving a year for this corporation that follows this game plan, this model that we know works.
However, to the city attorney's point, the contract it's worded is a seven-month contract with working title theater company, Granbury City, so it sounds to me like the anticipation is a, not so much a contract labor with an individual, but some sort of an agreement with a nonprofit that, as he stated, is not in existence.
Yeah, what's your perception, if you do not get the company formed, what would happen in this contract?
Sorry, repeat that?
What would happen if you didn't get the company formed?
Uh, well, I mean, there, you know, obviously, I'd like to approach it from a nonprofit status, I believe that that's the best thing for the community going forward, it allows, that taxes and status allows us to take donations, and, you know, development would be a big part of the organization. So I believe in that process, and I don't see any reason that it wouldn't be established, to be honest with you, but...
Well, actually, we need a nonprofit operating in that opera house, okay, because we are subleasing it basically to you, so it has to be a nonprofit. I think we need to make the contract contingent on you forming the nonprofit corporation.
I can foresee a few more clauses within this agreement, as an individual, that it would be an agreement between you as an individual and the city of Granbury, contingent upon other things.
Sure.
So with that being said, I think we may need to authorize the city attorney and city staff to form some sort of an agreement, contract, between Mr. Barris and the city, so we might want to entertain a motion of that, though, please.
Well, Mayor, I've got a question. I think, I think Mr. Allen has some more questions, but I would like to address that. I think that you make a good point there.
The first contract would be with you, oh, the first...
That's correct.
Yeah, so we have time, but it's... All right, the other question is, Mayor, back, just kind of like you were talking about, the six months. I know we were at the tourist board today, and a lot of people were talking about within Hudson Group, maybe not giving enough time to do, get things done the way they wanted to get it done, so I think we definitely got to give him some time. I don't like the idea of it expiring in June, because if it didn't work out in June, then we might be shut down there, July, August, and September are good months. So I think on that contract, maybe that's the way, we can make a motion, that we extend it out, with some exceptions, if it gets a Bible 1(c) and all that stuff, but if we end it in the middle of June, and we didn't have anybody to back up, we could be shut down, and it would hurt us downtown and the whole city.
And Mayor, with you making that point, and obviously, I understand you're wanting to safeguard our movement forward, and I, again, I have confidence that our staff can do that, so I would like to move that we approve the complete contract that we have in our hands, I'm going to just call it the contract consulting position in the tourism department to be the opera house liaison in order to continue promotion, advisory, and management of the opera house operations, for the timeframe in the current contract with the amendments that will be approved, or that'll be worked out through city manager and city attorney and Mr. Barris. So that way, it doesn't have to come back to us, they can get it worked out and move forward. Because Tony makes a good point, we've got to give this gentleman the timeframe, we just can't say seven months old, he has just that seven months and that one year, and we've got to get that done quickly.
Is there any way you can simplify your motion, please, sir?
That we approve the contract with, as it, that we approve the contract with Mr. Barris, with the amendments agreed upon by Mr. Barris, our city manager, and our city attorney. How about that?
Oh, that's much better.
Thank you. Okay, I made a motion.
We have a motion by councillor Tyra, who needs a second. We have a second. Now, any discussion regarding the motion? And by the way, the motion is to move to approve the contract with Andrew Barris and the city of Granbury, as amended by staff and our city attorney.
Agreed upon by staff and Mr. Barris.
Mr. Mayor, can I just share my concerns from the legal point of view?
Yes, sir.
The motion that I heard was entered into a contract with a corporation that doesn't exist, and that, I mean, that's what, that's what I said.
No, that's not what he's, that's not what he said in the, in the motion, he actually changed his language to approve a contract between the city and Andrew Barris.
Let me help that, help the attorney, let me, let me help.
No, I got it, it's great.
Well, I, there's a statement I want to make to him.
No, sir, not necessary.
Pardon me?
It's not necessary. The, this, the motion was to approve a contract between Andrew Barris, that's an individual, and the city of Granbury. It has nothing to do with the other portion of this contract, which has, which is for you to work out. That's what, that's what council is asking you and staff to do, is work that out. So, so if you feel like it's not an individual that we're dealing with, then spell it out somewhere in the contract, contingent upon the establishment of this nonprofit, but I would hope that we can count upon you to do that.
My concern would be, we're approving a contract right now that hasn't even been, that's not in existence yet, it would make more sense to me, I think, if Mr. Barris and I had a chance to work out the details, before you approve something, contingent on him forming a 501(c)(3) or anything else that just hasn't happened yet, and...
Let me, let me...
Once, once again, I think the motion was to, motion was to approve a contract between Andrew Barris and the city of Granbury, and as agreed upon by you, Andrew Barris, the city attorney, okay, city attorney, Andrew Barris, and the city manager.
Mayor...
And then it would come back to council.
I think I can...
For final approval.
But because the fact is, there are some legal issues, and so I'm asking for us to go into executive session to discuss this contract with our city attorney, because there's definitely issues he's brought up.
At this time, I now declare that the city council, Granbury City Council is convened into open session, and that the members, Mr. Perkel, Mr. Allen, Mr. Tyra, and myself, city manager, and the city attorney are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas government code, in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, section 551.071, consultation with city attorney. Mr. Barris, we'll be back.
Could we consider both of them?
We, we can.
Yeah.
At this time, we have a quorum, so we'll reconvene in open session, pick up where we left off. Council members, just to remind you, we exited into executive session with a motion on the floor, it was a motion to move to approve a contract as agreed between Andrew Barris and the city, as agreed upon by the city attorney, city manager, and Andrew Barris. We have that motion on the floor, we had it seconded, and at this time, I'd entertain a motion to postpone that motion, and that will move it to the following meeting. Need a motion?
I move it.
Anybody?
I move it.
We have a motion by Mr. Perkel to postpone. We have a second from Mr. Allen, all in favor of postponing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Postpone is just a majority vote, motion carries.
Mayor, I have a motion. I move that we instruct the city staff to author a letter of intent for Mr. Andrew Barris for the future contract.
Need a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Allen, to pin a letter of intent with Mr. Barris. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Any other business we need to take up, council?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, sir.
To approve the grant of ingress egress easement over a portion of Hewlett Park to benefit the reader property.
We have a motion to grant ingress egress rights on the reader property, which is part of Hewlett Park, need a second. Got a second from Mr. Perkel.
Mayor, can you, can the mayor at least explain to the public what this is about?
To grant ingress egress, hang on just a second, council member. You're saying that I stated it wrong, sir?
You said the reader property...
We have a motion to grant ingress and egress by way of Hewlett Park to the reader property. We have a motion by Mr. Allen, we have a second by Mr. Perkel. Any discussion regarding this item?
This lets the city put a stoplight down there in front of the convention center, if you wonder what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Perkel.
We've been trying for years.
City staff finally got it done. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? All in favor of granting an ingress egress through Hewlett Park to the reader property, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Any other business, please?
Mayor, I need to make a motion.
And that motion is, sir?
Approve the settlement in case number CO5825, city of Granbury versus Barbara Reader, for $15,000.
Give me that case number one more time, please, sir. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay settlement of $15,000 on case number CO5825. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Any other business? There being no other business, this meeting is adjourned.